Well, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enter into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel. One, former Blacksburg Middle School property. Two, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, pointees, employees of any public body, namely personnel. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
We're in closed session. Go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? And by the way, this is our Board's word to y'all that we're not talking about things in the back that we're not supposed to be. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes, while I was there.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
At this point in time, I will ask us to observe a moment of silence, especially keeping in mind those folks in Las Vegas who lost their lives, and their loved ones who are having to deal with that loss. And then I will ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Are there any motions at this time?
Yes. I would like to amend the agenda by adding, if you look on the first order of a business, the whole business, the resolution of MOA, I'd like to move that up, please, to beginning of all business.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any further discussion?
You mean, we're moving it up now to vote on?
We're moving it up now.
Yes, that's why I took that motion to be, is we're going to take that matter of all business up immediately.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? And this is just to move it to the agenda now, and amend the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
So now, is there any motions in regards to all business specifically tabling the memorandum of agreement with the DEQ?
Yes. I would like to move the order, the business, the MOA, the one that we put on the table last meeting, until this meeting, and my motion involves just leaving it on the table indefinitely.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second to that?
Aye.
Any discussion by any Board members?
I think, maybe if somebody could, could you provide a little bit of clarity, just for the audience, on what we've...
Initially, back in mid-September, we had a motion in regards to enter into agreement with the DEQ. We revisited that, and there was a vote to rescind that initial vote, and then we were addressing whether we should enter into that agreement. It was tabled until this meeting, and now Ms. Perkins's motion is to table it indefinitely, which means it will not appear back on the agenda unless someone else brings it and asks me to add it to the agenda.
If you look at the first item, I think it's under all business. Anyway, it's the MOA that we tabled until today's date.
We're just tabling it indefinitely now?
Right, and it will be, my intention is not to put it back on the agenda unless a Board member specifically asks me to.
Right.
So it'll be tabled indefinitely.
To table it indefinitely really means it will go away. It's not, it's no longer viable.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
And then we're back at, it looks like, presentations, recognitions, and awards, and Michelle Dykstra is here with Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia. Michelle, would you mind coming forward?
Hello. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Hello, everyone. I appreciate your time this evening, and I did have a moment where, when I was looking through the agenda, I thought, I can't really make everyone's lives miserable and make this a really long presentation, but knowing and being very respectful of your time, this will be very brief. I was here during the public address, I think it was, gosh, probably back in May now, just to let you all know what was going on with Boys and Girls Club, and so I wanted to give you an update with Boys and Girls Club in Montgomery County. And I do have a presentation, and I'm not sure if... And I apologize, it's gonna be a little bit hard to read, the text is small, but I'm happy to email it to you all, and I'm just gonna give you a little bit of information about the history of Boys and Girls Club, and then what we are looking to do moving forward. So as always, thank you all so much for your time. Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia, we are celebrating our 20th anniversary this year as Boys and Girls Club, and the national organization has been around for over 150 years. We are an organization that is unparalleled in whole youth development, and I believe wholeheartedly that we are at a point in time in our nation where making sure that our youth have a pathway, making sure that they have a pipeline to not only education but to career opportunities is of the utmost importance, and it's something that we can't simply rely on schools and our families to do anymore. And this is where Boys and Girls Club comes in, as an opportunity for students to have mentors, to have trusted adults in an after-school environment. And we, as an organization, see such awesome returns, I can't even tell you, here in Riddick City, and I'm really excited that we are gonna be back in Montgomery County. The Boys and Girls Club mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And that especially those who need us most part, you know, we do wanna make sure that students who would go home possibly to an empty house because mom and dad are walking, or maybe there are not parents in the home, they're living with grandparents, or those students who, you know, are out sometimes on the streets, wandering around after school, those are the students that we really want to reach, and that we wanna make sure that we get them through our doors, because we have found as an organization, if we get them through our doors, that we can impact their lives and we can really change their futures. We are an after-school care provider for students ages six through 18, so we are first grade through 12th grade. And in Roanoke, we operate at a standalone site, the Ninth Street location, and I'll get into that information in a little bit, but there's really two different kinds of models. Sometimes Boys and Girls Clubs will operate in a school facility, and sometimes they will operate in these standalone sites. We are focused on whole youth development, we pick up where the school day ends, and we focus on activism and tutoring first and foremost. We do an hour of homework every single day with our students. We pair our students with teachers, former teachers, mentors, current teachers, depending on the setting, to make sure that any additional help they need with their academics is the first thing that we focus on. And everything we do as Boys and Girls Club is data-driven, and I personally know how important that is in Riddick City and everything we do. We wanna make sure that this is not just anecdotal, not just a daycare. We're trying to make sure that when those students walk through our doors, that their lives are positively changed for the long term. And some of the stories that come out of Boys and Girls Club will just amaze you with regards to kids that really had no idea what they were gonna do until they walked in, oftentimes to play basketball. That seems to be the hook for a lot of kids, especially young men. They come in and they just need a place to hang out, and they come into Boys and Girls Club and we're able to really change their lives that way. We do focus not only on academics and tutoring, but on recreation and healthy lifestyles. So we do find that a lot of our students have no idea, I'll give you an example, where their food comes from. One of the programs that we ran in Riddick City this year was in partnership with the Cooperative Extension, and we had an 18-week program where our students planted a garden, planted seeds in the back of our Boys and Girls Club location. Every other week, they worked in the garden, they watched all of their plants grow, they understood harvesting, they understood weeding, they understood what it took to actually get these plants to the point where they were producing fruits and vegetables. The alternating weeks, we had Chef Aaron Deal from River and Rail in Riddick City come in and teach the students how to actually cook the food that they were growing. And some of the greatest pictures, and I should've included them in the presentation, I can email them to you, were of our students learning how to make spaghetti sauce. And you think about what a simple, you know, recipe that can be, it's tomatoes and basil and onions and garlic, but a lot of our students really just believe that tomato sauce came out of a jar. So understanding where your food comes from can be crucially important to helping these students understand what it means to eat healthily, and especially when eating healthily is not something that comes naturally. It's not something that they have easy access to, it's something that they really have to struggle to eat healthily, and so we're able to work on those parts of that healthy lifestyle. We also work on character development. We wanna make sure that our students that are at Boys and Girls Club, that they are given back to the community, and that's part of citizenship as well, that they understand that it does take a village. We have our older students working with our younger students, and some of the mentoring, and some of the recreation activities. Our students go out and they volunteer on a regular basis. They understand what it means to give back to the community. And for students who oftentimes come from very little means, giving back is not something that they really know that they have the capability to do until we help them figure out the right way for them to give back within their community. As I said earlier, we do have the two operating models, school-based sites, and then standalone club sites. So our standalone site in Riddick City has been our location at Ninth Street Southeast. We serve 150 students every day at that site, and we're busting at the seams. We have never had any kind of direct marketing to the schools, it is all word of mouth that gets our students through the doors. They tell their friends. We have a waitlist of over 50 students that we cannot serve in Riddick City right now because we just simply don't have the room, and I'm working to fix that. The good news is that we do have the capacity to serve in Montgomery County, which is why I'm here today. So some of you may know that Boys and Girls Club has been in Riddick County previously. We started a location, and I will tell you, this was prior to my time, but Boys and Girls Club started a location at Blacksburg Middle School in 2001, Christiansburg Middle School also in 2001, and Shawsville Middle School in 2004. And those sites were funded through 21st Century Grants, and you guys, the Board of Supervisors, has been very kind and has helped with some financial support for those sites as well. We unfortunately had to close those sites in 2016, and the reason for that is that the grant funding ran out. The grants were something that, in my opinion, had been taken for granted, as something that was always gonna be there, and a nonprofit cannot run simply on grant funding. In order to have a sustainable nonprofit, there has to be that base of operations support, and it has to be driven from within the community. The community has to know the value of the organization in order for it to be sustainable. And that's really why I'm here today, is to let you all know what it is that we intend to do in Montgomery County, and how I intend to make it sustainable. We were, we have not been in Montgomery County for the past year, but I'm telling you that we are here, and we're here to stay, and I'm gonna give you the steps on how we're gonna make that a reality. Shawsville and Christiansburg Middle School were affected in the closure from the loss of the 21st Century Grants. Shawsville and Christiansburg both operated self-funded and self-operated after-school programs during the 2016 and 2017 school year. And in the winter 2017, so about February, March timeframe, the schools came back to us and asked if we would please consider reapplying for 21st Century funding in order to run Boys and Girls Club sites at those schools. And what I really came to understand is that the administrative side of running an after-school program is incredibly tedious and burdensome, especially for teachers that have already been at school for eight, nine, 10 hours during the day. When you are asking teachers, and even when you're paying them, you're asking them to spend that additional time, and to do the administrative side of it, which, you know, you're really coming up with a completely new system, because it's not something that's tracked through the existing school software, it's something that you're creating these new lines of communication. And that was the part that was really troublesome for the schools. It wasn't the teachers, it wasn't the tutoring, it was that administrative piece that was really difficult, and it's one of the parts that we do really well as Boys and Girls Club. We have the systems in place to collect, analyze, and then act on the data that we have for every single student. 21st Century Grants for this year, we submitted applications, I believe in April in 2017, for Shawsville Middle School and for Christiansburg Middle School. Shawsville, can I say that correctly? Shawsville, Christiansburg. And we did that again because we were asked to do so. We did it a little bit differently this time. We submitted these applications as Boys and Girls Club, as the fiduciary agent, as the fiscal lead on these programs. And what that means is that we have been able to hire the teachers directly, so again, that helps the school system. We're not running this through school system payroll, we're not having to do any of the administrative side through the school system, it's all going through Boys and Girls Club, but the tutors that are in place for these programs are the teachers that the students already see on a regular basis, and that's really helpful. This also, this partnership with the school system allows the school system to give back in kind through transportation and through the space and the location in which we host the Boys and Girls Clubs. We received notification of the awards in mid-August, and I'll tell you that we, as an organization, are limited, and all school systems and all organizations are limited to four applications per year, you're only allowed to submit four. We submitted for Shawsville, Christiansburg, Fallon Park Elementary School in Riddick City, and for Rocky Mount Elementary in Franklin County, and we were granted three of those four, Shawsville, Christiansburg, and Rocky Mount. So, East Montgomery High School was also a consideration when we were looking at applying for these grants, and we saw that there was a need in East Montgomery High School. Danny, the principal of East Montgomery, came to us and said that there was definitely a need within his student population. And what we decided to do was actually to self-fund East Montgomery High School. We felt that because of the, there were some different metrics essentially in how these grants are scored, that we felt were going to possibly reduce the scores, either Christiansburg or Shawsville, Shawsville in particular. And so we went ahead, and I took it to our Board, and our Board agreed to self-fund East Montgomery High School. So we knew that we were gonna be in Montgomery County this year regardless of whether or not we received the 21st Century Grants. Part of that, for me personally, is an act of good faith, saying that we know that there are students who need to be served in Montgomery County, and we wanted to make sure that we were taking a step into Montgomery County no matter the access to the grant funding. The program in East Montgomery High School costs us about $35,000 a year to run, it's a three-day-a-week program. We are bringing the teachers in to the after-school program, and then, again, the rest of it is just like a regular Boys and Girls Club. We have the recreation and the free time. Our students all receive snacks every single day, that's in partnership with Feeding America, and that's true in Montgomery County, and it's also true in Riddick City, and true in Rocky Mount as well. So our students are getting fed during this after-school program, and it's not only a snack, but a couple times a week, they also receive either a super snack or a full dinner, where we're making sure that these students, you know, your kids can't learn if they're not, if their tummies aren't full, and we wanna make sure that access to food is not on the top of their concern when they're trying to learn in the after-school program. So, as I said, we're successful with Shawsville and with Christiansburg, and we reopened these sites in September of this year. So we received notification of the awards and had 30 days to reopen these sites per the award requirements. And we had already been preparing, we're very hopeful on those sites, we had folks in place. For us, it means that we have doubled our staff in a matter of a month. It also means that we're going to be doubling the number of students that we're serving. So from the 150 that we serve currently in Riddick City, now from Montgomery County, Riddick City, and Franklin County, we'll be serving over 300 students per day, and that gives us over 1,000 club members per year, knowing that not every student comes every single day, but we've been able to double the number of students and double our staff. And what I would say to you all is that this is more than just, this is more than just a social service mission, this is also economic development. What we're working on as Boys and Girls Club is not only making sure that we have folks that are employed in youth development, we have a lot of students from Radford, a lot of students from Virginia Tech, that are our youth development staff that come and work for us. But we're also then, in the inverse, making sure that our students are prepared for the workforce once they graduate from high school. Whether it is going into a certificate program, whether it's going into an associate, or going into a four-year degree, or whether it's going directly into the workforce, we're making sure that our students are prepared for all of those pathways. So the future of Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia, we have the ability to charter Boys and Girls Clubs all the way from St. Bristol, Tennessee. We're gonna stay in what is a reasonable distance, and right now, the focus is in Montgomery County and Franklin County. Our Ninth Street location in Riddick City, as I said, is at capacity, so I'm currently trying to figure out what we can do in Riddick City to make sure that we are able to serve more students in Riddick City. We know that there is a greater need than what we're currently able to meet. In Montgomery County, we have three sites, and those three sites are funded for three years, so we have the three-year grants, it's a total of $522,000 per year for three years that we're receiving from the Department of Education in order to run those sites. So the great news is, these sites are funded for three years. The bad news for me, or the exciting opportunity for me, is that this means that we now have to come up with a sustainability plan, because at the end of three years, I'm not gonna be reliant on grant funding to make sure that these sites are able to be operational. We also have Franklin County. One of the exciting things that I'm working on currently in Riddick City is the opening of a Northwest Riddick City site, and that's Villa Heights, and we are hoping to open that in 2019 through a process where we're renovating a historic house in Riddick City. The sustainability for Montgomery County, as I see it, and as the Board is leading me down this path and through this journey, is that the ultimate goal would be to have a standalone Boys and Girls Club in Montgomery County that can serve the students from Shawsville, from Christiansburg, from your elementary schools as well. And this model works really well. Charlottesville is a prime example of how Boys and Girls Club can really become a keystone in a community to youth development, and that's really who I've looked to as we have made these plans, as we make our, as, you know, we set forth with what this is gonna look like from a funding perspective, from a community involvement perspective, from a volunteer perspective. I'm really lucky to have Charlottesville so close by, because they started in a very similar position and have expanded in a matter of eight years. They started at about an $800,000 budget, I believe, and have expanded in a matter of eight years to an $8 million per year operating budget. And they now run seven sites in Charlottesville and in the surrounding counties and surrounding areas. So we know that it can be done, we know that it can be done sustainably with the community involvement. One of the great things about the Boys and Girls Club model that I'll point out on this slide is that we, this is not the great thing, we do not receive funding from Boys and Girls Club in America. The great part about that is that we are able to tailor each club site that we open to the individual community in which we serve. Shawsville is a very different, has a different student population than our Riddick City schools. We're able to make sure that the programming that we provide at Shawsville caters to that community, that it addresses the issues that are affecting that community, and that it meets the students where their interests lie. So some of the programming is gonna be very different in Montgomery County than the programming we do in Riddick City. It doesn't have to be cookie cutter, so it's not like a lot of the national nonprofit organizations that you see where it is an exact replica in every city in which they serve. This will be something that is tailored to Montgomery County to make sure that we are sorting the needs of your population here. Our operating model, just to give you an idea, is that we do after-school programming from 2:30 to 7:00 during the school year. In Riddick City, our students are actually bused to our standalone site, and then our parents pick up our students. The great part about this is that we have face-to-face time with our parents on a daily basis, and I know, and we are seeing this throughout the region, that that parent involvement and the parent interaction is one of the keys to success for these students, and so we are looking at what we can do to make sure that we're capitalizing on that face-to-face time with the parents for the benefit of the students. Our membership is $15 per year. That means that students ages six to 18 have after-school care every day, reliable, safe, with safe and trusted adult relationships every single day for only $15 for the entire school year. Yes, that helps us serve a population that economically may be disadvantaged, but we do not limit the students that can come to Boys and Girls Club based on their family's economic status. So anyone can attend Boys and Girls Club, and I really believe that it's important that we get students from all socioeconomic backgrounds into Boys and Girls Club, because it's important for them to be able to learn from each other. This is not something where we need to separate or silo our students based on their income levels or their family's income levels, they can all learn from each other. We focus on whole youth development, so this means developing psychosocial skills, academics, and then also teaching students skills that they need to be productive and caring citizens and adults. We also run a summer camp program in Riddick City, it's currently a nine-week program, so we only, we take one week off after school gets out, we take one week off before school goes back. That nine-week summer school program, our summer camp program, runs 7:30 a.m. until 6:30 p.m. every single day. Our students receive a hot lunch every day, they also receive breakfast, and they receive dinner a couple times a week as well during that program. That is more expensive for us, it's more expensive for us to operate, and so the cost for that is $65 per week. However, we were able to scholarship every single student who needed a scholarship this past year, and our enrollment had skyrocketed this past year. So in conclusion, I just wanted to let you all know, the Boys and Girls Club has a mission to serve, not only in Riddick City, Riddick County, Franklin County, but specifically in Montgomery County. We wanna be here to make sure that your students' needs are being met, that your family's needs are being met when it comes to after-school care, and that we are helping you all develop these youth into, again, these productive caring citizens who are gonna give back, who are gonna be a part of your workforce, who are going to hopefully support us all one day when we're retired and, you know, when we need those folks as a part of our economy. And we wanna be a part of Montgomery County's foreseeable future. This does not come with any kind of ask today, this is simply just me coming to let you all know what's going on, but I will be asking in the future to be considered for inclusion in the Montgomery County budget. I do think it's important that not only the municipality participate, but that we also are getting the businesses, that we're also getting our corporations, that we're getting our individual donors, to understand the benefit of this organization, of this whole youth development, and of after-school care for our students. And that is the end, how did I do? The end of my presentation, and I'm really happy to take any questions you guys might have.
I'm gonna start off with Supervisor Creed.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I haven't.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, I remember very well, like Christiansburg Middle, I don't know when that went away over there, but I did know that, and I was sorry to hear that. It was not, it would not be there anymore. I guess you work with the principal carefully to have a staff, a permanent staff-
Yeah.
-that will be there.
That's correct. And it's a mix of Boys and Girls Club staff, which include youth development staff, we have a unit director in place at every single school, so that unit director is a full-time position, our youth development staff are part-time staff, but they are all employees of Boys and Girls Club. And then we hire teachers as tutors, that's their official title, and so it's the teachers from within those schools who are then working with their students after school.
And they have, also have a portion of their time for athletics and activities and all those things, and someone to work with them.
That's correct, and it's one of the important components, I believe, especially if we're talking about our middle school and our teenage population. A lot of times, we lose our teenagers because they are playing sports or because they are working, and we wanna make sure that we are able to still keep them as Boys and Girls Club members. So part of that for us is the athletic component, the other part is a youth employment services component. The other part is a youth employment services component, where I'm working with area businesses to match students with part-time jobs. With the matching being done through Boys and Girls Club, so we can continue to monitor those students, make sure that they're not, you know, that they're not losing the academic side when they, when they do go to work, but that they're able to, to develop both sides as a student.
Right, right. And you do make the scholarships available to students who really cannot afford that?
We do. Of course, scholarship funding is based on our fundraising capabilities. You know, we were very, very fortunate to have a strong year this year in fundraising. And that's why we were able to scholarship our summer students who needed it, ever since they needed it.
Good. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
Thank you very much for what you do. Is there some reason you don't have it on the South Side out of Renner?
The reason we are where we are is because these are the schools that have come and asked for our help right now. Looking into the future, I think it's going to be incumbent, I'd love to have further conversation with you to find out where the areas of need are, because that's, that's where we want to be. And Renner, I think, is certainly, is certainly a target area.
I do appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
I think those two schools in particular were having problems with test scores and that kind of thing, and they saw this as a way, especially the academic part, to help out. I just want to compliment you on your enthusiasm, and just as it's important to have quality preschool and childcare, it's so important to have before and after-school programs, as we all know, and it's very beneficial. And I was interested in what you said about the, so you do the fundraising, and that gets your businesses, your government, and your private donors involved, like Charlottesville did. So, sort of, do, who coordinates all that, or how do you get the community folks involved?
Well, I start by coming to the Board of Supervisors meeting, hoping that there's lots of people paying attention. But it's, it's boots on the ground. And for me personally, you know, my experience, I'm very lucky to be well-connected in Renner City, but my connections in Montgomery County are not as strong. And so, that's part of the reason I'm here today. If there's anyone that you all know of that I need to be reaching out to, it's incumbent upon me to make, to form those relationships and to have those lasting relationships with your folks in Montgomery County.
So, if we have suggestions, should we just send them to you?
Absolutely. I've got my business cards with me today.
That would be great.
I'll pass those around to you, so you've got my contact information at my email. And I will send this presentation to you all as well.
Thank you.
Supervisor DeMots.
Well, that segues beautifully with what I was going to ask, which was, do you know Bethany Mott with the Alliances for Better Childcare Strategies?
I do not.
That would be a wonderful networking opportunity. Now, she's focused more on early childhood education-type pieces, but she will know a lot of people. So, please do make sure to leave us your card so we can connect you.
Perfect.
And Craig would be a good connection on that as well.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Appreciate you all.
The next item on our agenda is Mr. Clark with VDOT.
Just a few updates on what we've been working on this past month, and where we are on some of the projects that are going on in the county. Some maintenance items, have had some brush cutting going on, mostly on Brooksfield, Keister's Branch, and then on the other end of the county, at the Oral Ridge Mill. We're doing some ditching, which is something we'd never get a chance to do enough of, you know, on Walton Road, color cleaning on Walms Branch Road as well. Shoulder repairs and patching and paving going on on, what do you think? Oh, paving was on Jade Road and Mount Taylor Road. Did about a mile on Mount Taylor Road, some asphalt patching and paving. Shoulder repair on Jade Road, McCoy Road, White Thorn, Bittefalo, and on Mill Point Drive, we've been working with a property owner and a subdivision on Mill Point. Also, some just sort of smaller patch work on Switchback, Bicker Switch, Old Pike, Huff Hill, Rustic Bridge. That's kind of the maintenance items. So, the, some of the bigger things that we've had going on, we're getting ever closer to a legal through truck restriction on Mount Taylor Road, receives a correspondence from the county, tying up that part, because it's a legal designation and it's restricting certain types of vehicles from roads, has to go through the Commonwealth Transportation Board. So, I'll let you know when we're closer to getting them to approve. It's usually not an issue, but they do have to formally vote on it. We've got a, this Saturday, the parking lot, it's not quite complete, but we're going to have an opening ceremony, kind of a ribbon cutting, the town is interested in doing this. It's a named parking lot, Kenneth B. Gibson Parking Lot, and it received that designation a while ago, and had to take down the sign from the old parking lot, and all the construction is going on, so we're going to have to do something to put up there. It's mostly done, as you've seen, there's cars parked in there, it's operating, but there's lots more stuff that we're going to go in there to make it a better facility, bus shelters and trash cans and more landscaping. And so, we've got a lot of tidying up to do and some more things to put in. The contract itself goes quite a bit further because it's tied to the landscaping, and so, we'll be working on that. But now that we have a functioning, much larger and more convenient parking lot for the people that are parking and catching buses, and we've separated the bus circulation from the parking lanes, and that's working all very well, and we're going to do an opening ceremony. It'll be 10 o'clock in the morning this Saturday. And I know the town is handling the logistics of that. I know they've been worried about it, and a number of people to come to that. I'll be there, and hope to see them, see them doing that. South Gate Drive Interchange is moving along, and it's supposed to be opened by contract. It's supposed to be open to traffic November 17th, and that may be the date that the contractor is finished. We're probably going to hold off from an operations standpoint on actually putting traffic on there, to, we could have something similar to a ribbon cutting, an open ceremony thing between Virginia Tech and VDOT, maybe the Corporate Research Center. And just like the parking lot, there'll be a lot more work to do once it's open to traffic. We wanted to get it open as soon as possible. That was a good date to get the contractor focused on opening. And from a practical standpoint, getting close to Thanksgiving with students and a lot of other things going on. The last football game, I think, is right around there, too. We'll probably not open it until sometime in December. And I'll let you all know, of course, in the opening ribbon cutting or ceremony will be on that. But we're looking for sometime in December. And then, there'll be lots more work to do on that one. Mostly, we want to tear out the old South Gate Drive, take down the signal and do all that. Traffic should be, be on there in the next few months. I think that's all I have as far as my updates, but I kind of breezed through, through a lot of that. But sometime we'll get ready to do our winter, I hate to mention this, but crews spent today and last week getting their trucks ready. We go through what we call a dry run, where we got the tent, it's kind of snow, we know the weather we've been having, I think it's a chance of it. But we got all the trucks ready, make sure we have the equipment oiled, and every, you know, all the spreaders are working, the trucks are on, the emergency equipment is in the trucks. We're going through that right now, because the leaves are changing at some point in that time of year. So, that's what we've been doing, our maintenance crews. I'll take any questions.
I'll start, start with Supervisor Shepherd.
No question. Just thank you for cutting out as much brush as you did. It really helped.
Supervisor DeMots.
No questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
Yes, a couple things. Do you know, like, what organization keeps statistics on how many wrecks there are on Interstate 81 and how many fatalities within a year?
The state police keep a lot of those records. They, they report on that. We hold a lot of those records, students, between us, the state police, and DMV. But if you have anything specific, our traffic engineer and our operations people have a lot of those statistics.
I'm specifically interested in the crashes that we've had in Montgomery County during the past year. And I think I've stayed here before, that I consider it a death trap at times, and it's affecting, I think overall, 81 is affecting economic development-
Yeah.
...and tourism within the state of Virginia. And all I hear is there's no money to fix it. But to me, that's not acceptable because it's a public safety issue, and we're charged here with the safety of the public. So, whenever I can bring it up, I'm going to continue to bring it up. I don't know if there's a way to organize localities along the interstate from southwest all the way to northern Virginia, but something has to be done. Some kind of pressure has to be put on our federal officials. Something has to be done. So, every time I get the opportunity, I'm just going to state that. My other question has to do with the pipeline coming through here, the proposed pipeline. There's been a lot of talk about the trucks coming on and maybe perhaps tearing up roads. How is that addressed? Like, can VDOT ask for a bond, or how, how do we address, if they're going to tear the roads up, getting them fixed?
From, from the highway department's standpoint, we'll treat it just like any other entity using the road, not just driving along it to get from point A to point B, but crossing and entrances, construction-type entrances, will have to have a permit, absolutely, and they're usually bonded. And if any damage is done to the road, they'll be held responsible for that. And we, we don't do that often. We've had issues with other large, you know, we've had the railroad, when they're doing railroad crossings, sometimes they'll get into the road and they'll have to fix it when it gets torn up.
So, is that something that you do as VDOT?
Yes.
And, okay.
Now, because this is a large project, we're not going to try to coordinate it just for quantity and scale, we'll be probably doing it out of one office. But meetup, it'll be my office, and then, you know, the Salem office, and then whatever little office, each trying to do things a little bit different. We're going to try to coordinate it after, as VDOT, as an agency, talks to the, this company.
So, you could keep us informed on how that does?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
Also, one other thing I want to mention is that you asked about the stats on 81. I'll find out those for you. I'll also find out, because I know a lot of that is published, it may be on a website that VDOT has. The other thing that your comments made me think of is that this Thursday, I don't know if people will be in a public hearing, and I'll get to the date and time, or it may have been already sent to Mr. DeMots, but that's at the time when the CTV member from at least this area, usually the Secretary of Transportation and the Commissioner, come, and it used to be the primary and interstate six-year plan public hearing. It's a little bit different now that Smart Scale has sort of been the funding mechanism and the way that projects get chosen, but they still come around to every district in the state, at nine of the 91 districts. And so, Thursday, this Thursday, will be the one for the Salem District. So, that'd be a good time to talk to someone. There will be people talking about 81 at that meeting.
I really, I feel like it's imperative to keep bringing it up.
Absolutely.
And so far, that, that speed limit with the trucks being in the left-hand lane and going the speed limit isn't working, and we don't have enough state troopers to enforce. And so, I will just tell you that when, and this was a safety issue that I was concerned about. I sat on 81 for two and a half hours, whichever Sunday it was, when the tractor trailer had a wreck, and it was between Christiansburg and Aronto, so you couldn't get off. Seven vehicles in the left-hand lane behind me, most of them were trucks, pickup trucks, SUV, and one car went down the median, up the median, and pulled out in front of oncoming traffic going south on 81. And it could have been a disaster.
Yeah, every time there's a wreck, there's all sorts of-
Yeah.
-related domino effect type of thing.
Yeah.
Secondary crashes because of rear ends, that, or, or, you get frustrated, people start to do things that they wouldn't-
Because they don't want to sit there. Yeah. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
Just one thing. I know the last time you brought up about Meadow Creek, no big trucks. How do we get started on that?
We, we've started, actually, we received a letter from-
We actually sent a letter to the VDOT telling them we need to start that same process that we did on Mount Taylor.
Yeah, I mentioned that along with the one for Mount Taylor, but yeah, we've started that process.
Thank you. Supervisor Perkins.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about 81, too, to piggyback on what Ms. Biggs said. It seems that for the last three Sundays, it's been impossible to go down 81 northbound, or to go northbound on 81. I can't explain it except that it, 81 can't handle the traffic. And Sunday, I was getting ready to go visit my husband at the Veterans Care Center, and I couldn't go because the traffic was backed up, what, eight miles, Mary, something like that? And I came out of Cracker Barrel thinking I could go down Route 11, and I looked at the traffic which they had diverted to Route 11, and that was bumper to bumper. I didn't want to get into that either. So, what was I to do? Those are the two real places that you can get to so that you can get where you want to go. And basically, it's happened every Sunday for the last three Sundays. And I just have a really hard time. I don't know if it's, when it says between Christiansburg and Aronto, you know, there's a place there going down 81 where it goes like this as you're going down to Aronto, and I see trucks, I've seen trucks behind me, I mean, moving at bright next speeds. And I understand they have to be there. I mean, that's how we get most of our materials that they could come, or, and products, they come by trucks. But at the same time, I just, I don't think the federal people understand what a safety problem it is. You just, I, I don't really like to, if I'm on 81, I don't want to go down that little curvy part where there's a tractor-trailer truck, because I'm so afraid that one will fall over on me or something will happen, because they don't slow down. And if that part bothers me very much. And I just want to piggyback on what she says, because, you know, we brought it up the last time you were here, too, Dave. I know that it's not your bailiwick, probably, but it is one of those things that the Commonwealth Transportation Board should be working with, and I'm sure they are. But it's just, like I was told at that meeting, we don't have the resources, and that was the end of it. So, and then the other thing, since I go up and down that road frequently, I did mention about the, the bridge down that-
Which is at Ellison, yes.
Yeah, and also, what happened down there at Ellison? Was that part of the road that was paved, and then it was not marked, but it's a very rough, and for a long time, it wasn't marked, and it was very difficult to tell where you're supposed to be on that road. Now, there is a center marking, none on the sides, but it's almost as if it was never put down appropriately. I don't know. It was, it seems like the rocks were coming up out of there, you know?
It's a different style of treatment. It's not a full asphalt-
Right.
...overlay where you put a roller on there and roll it smooth. It's a, that's probably a slurry mix. It's intended to be a sealer. You put a seal on the road, and it's much less expensive than a full overlay, and for a road that's, the shape is generally good, the road is generally in good strength and repair, it acts very similar to a driveway sealer in extending the life of the current pavement. It's very rough at the start, I agree. That, that does smooth out with traffic.
And one other thing, on 460, how far are those guardrails going to go down the middle of the bypass? People are working at nighttime, putting guardrails in, you know, on the, the center?
Yes. As far as those are just replacements, those are repair, I don't think it's new guardrail.
It's, well, I don't know. I was watching them on the right-hand side going into Blacksburg, and then, now they're coming back and they're working on that center part, which, I don't know, I didn't remember some guardrails being there, because they stop at a certain-
Yeah.
...point. But, so they're not going to go all the way down?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll ask that, though.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your, your being here and listening to some of the things that occur as we're traveling on the road, and it's just really, as me-
And your, and your comments on 81 are well-received. I drive it, too, and I never know whether to take 81 if I'm going to our offices in Salem or not. And if no one else brings it up at that board of the public hearing, I'll, if I can get a word in with our Commonwealth Transportation Board members, I'll pass along the board's concerns about that until, I was at a board meeting Tuesday night. was at a board meeting Tuesday night, Tuesday night, and heard several comments on it.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you so much, David.
Supervisor Creek.
Yes, there was just, just one thing that I will take up, and that is Bonner's Run. Can you tell me what the spots were stopping and starting on Bonner's Run?
No, we have not chosen any spots. We'll work with the county staff. It's a revenue-sharing project, really. It's the county generally works with, you know, we can do estimates, but it's sort of a county request on what section the county would like to see. So right now, we can give you sort of data on where there's drainage issues or where there might be work that would fit with the budget we have. But right now, no sections have been identified as, we're definitely going to do this section, yes.
No, nobody that knows what's going to happen.
No, other than, other than we're, we're in the process of identifying those areas.
I've had several people ask me about it, and it's hard to tell somebody something when you can't get an answer as to what is going to happen.
I mean, if you have some sections that you'd like to see, we'll, we'll look at those.
I'd be glad to take a look at them if you'd like to tell somebody.
Thank you. I have a question about 114 Pepper's Ferry Road. I've had a couple of requests for a speed study. There's a section of it that's at 55 miles an hour, and seeing if the whole section could be made 45. It's a very small section, I think, or I say small, maybe a mile and a half, two miles, that's at 55, and see if we can get the speeds reduced to 45, if that would be possible.
You know, that was looked at. It may be given a couple of years now, so I'll see when the last speed study was done and if we would
I was at the Farm Bureau Dinner, and a couple of fellows brought it up, that sometimes when they're out there with their tractors, because it's still a farming area, and then they look behind them and here's a car, they're going 15 miles an hour and the car's going 65. So, thank you. Does that spur any other questions? David, thank you as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public address. We don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone that would like to come address the board? Please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for definitely tabling the MOA. Second of all, I want to say that the Transportation Board meeting will be at the Holiday Inn, Valley Mall, Ordway, at 4:00 P.M. It sounds like maybe it would be really good for citizens. We have one citizen that's going because of the MVP project and the R cut, but it sounds like it would be good for multiple people to go, various levels to talk about I-81. I went to the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors meeting today, and this, in the public address, this, this presentation was given by Bonnie Law, and I just want to read it to you because it seemed to be very impactful to Roanoke County supervisors and administrative personnel. Mr. Chairman and other board members, good afternoon. I'm Bonnie Law, and I live in Franklin County. She ran her own independent insurance business for many years. I am here today to share some updated information about EQT Corporation MVP. EQT being the parent company of MVP headquartered in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. MVP being the Mountain Valley Pipeline LLC, a private limited liability corporation and subsidiary of EQT Corporation with origination in Delaware. EQT Corporation is one part a petroleum and natural gas company and another part pipeline company. EQT Corporation announced a potential merger with Energy Rice Incorporated this year in June 2017. This announcement was met with swift and decisive action by New York hedge fund group, Jana Partners, who has tried to block this merger and now wants to split up EQT Corporation. Based on the enormous pressure from Jana Partners, EQT has pushed pause on this merger and is trying to figure out what exactly to do with the company within the next year. EQT obviously has multiple options they are reportedly considering, one being to sell or spin off their pipeline business prior to the merger into a new entity with a new board of directors. A second hedge fund group, one month ago in September 2017, named D. Lee Shaw and Company, has also stepped up to demand EQT Corporation split the company after the merger, then spin off their pipeline business. It seems to be the used car analogy, selling the individual parts is worth more money than the sum of the whole appears to be, the hedge fund's arguments. Angry investors from Rice Energy Incorporated have also filed a federal lawsuit regarding this merger stating mass undervaluation. EQT's net income for 2016 was negative $452.93 million after a net profit of approximately $85 million profit in 2015, and may be on track to lose much more this year. EQT Corporation is facing a multitude of problems right now. So, I just wanted you to know that the EQT you are dealing with today may not be the EQT of 2018. The MVP of today may or may not even exist or be the MVP of 2018. Remember, a private limited liability corporation originated in Delaware can simply decide to close the books and disappear as others have previously stated. I felt it was vital to bring this to your attention based on the liability and mitigation questions, concerns, and responsibilities post-construction, and the fact that Virginia does not have a current clear abandoned pipeline law. Thank you. They voted on a resolution, which you have, I sent it to you just a little while ago, to work on a, require a water quality performance bond, and also try to extend the public comment period. Richard Kaywood said he was just trying to get something. Of course, they still don't have the SWAP stuff done. A lot of things aren't done, so it needs to be more than that. Bert Bondurant is going to be, she's here today, going to be working on the details of the bonding. What Richard Kaywood said to me was, you know, you've got to have some, like, hard numbers. And I said, what about a line out Mount Tabor or, you know, out in Ellison? And he's like, yeah, that would be, that would be some hard numbers that you could approach DEQ with. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure. I'm Margaret Roston, 2124 Mount Tabor Road. Thank you, folks, very much for tabling that whole thing. One of the things that Linda just said was very briefly at the end, she mentioned getting some hard numbers for what it would cost to put a pipeline down Mount Tabor Road. We'd also need, maybe one down every other road that that pipeline might cut across. What would it cost? And we need those kind of numbers. So somebody kind of, they put in pipelines elsewhere in the area, down near Mac Road, because I have an idea of what it costs to put in a pipeline, but if we had these kind of numbers, we'd get a feel for what would happen if there is a disaster. Same thing's true, I don't know if Mr. Clark's still here, but what would it cost to fix the roads? I mean, what are the real costs of this project when they wear out these natural bridges and so forth? I mean, getting those kind of numbers together, a lot of it's already out there. You can kind of just compare, you know, something that's happened. But anyway, thank you, folks, so much for keeping after this, and I hope this thing goes away. Take care. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. There's no addendum, and next, on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is that moved?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
And we've addressed old business, so now we can go on to new business, which is Legislative Priorities 2018.
And Mr. Chair, as the board considers this item, we did have one additional item that, you know, give Carol the credit for thinking of this one as we were reviewing these one last time, and that's at your place this evening. That's adding a bullet point supporting an amendment to Chapter 638 relating to the New River Valley Communications Regional Authority, allowing the authority to develop a formula for allocation of cost among the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, Montgomery County, and Virginia Tech upon approval of each governing body. The board's actually taken an action on this several weeks ago. We did make one amendment to what was acted on, so that'll be coming back before you on your October 23 meeting. But assuming that that gets approved, which I think it will by all the governing bodies, we need to remind our legislators that we need their support on that as well. So appreciate Carol catching that and making sure we had it on our list.
And is there a motion, and with the addition in regards to adding that to our legislative priorities?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll start, let's see, I think it's time to go into Mr. Creed. Any?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
No, thank you.
Supervisor King?
Supervisor Biggs?
No, I just hope everyone signs up to go to lobby day.
Yeah.
To make sure we can lobby these.
February 8.
Anything from Supervisor Demoss? All right. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Next up is County Attorney's Report.
I'm Eric Porbes.
Really?
County Administrator's Report.
I'll take his time. I only have two items this evening. First, as you're aware, the board chair did sign the rezoning application for the front six acres of the old Blacksburg Middle School property last Friday. Certainly look forward to seeing that project move forward, and also wanted to thank the chair for the kind words he had in an email to you guys about staff. I know there were some questions last Friday morning, and even though I was out of the office, I think several of us talked pretty quickly and got that resolved and got that moving forward very quickly. So thank you for the kind words. The other thing I wanted to mention was last Monday, I had the opportunity to, I was in Williamsburg for a couple of meetings associated with the City County Managers Group, and it was part of VML. I actually had the opportunity at our, at a luncheon meeting, Secretary of Transportation Aubrey Lane was our speaker, and I just happened to look out and got to sit beside him at the table, and he and I had quite a conversation. And I've been his ear pretty good about the issues that we are concerned about with Interstate 81 and safety. He did express, that's been expressed to him up and down the corridor. And I said, well, yes, it has, but we need to deal with that. Also had the opportunity to talk to him about expansion of passenger rail into the New River Valley. He was, he is very supportive of that, of course, as with anything, it comes down to funding. After that same meeting, I had the opportunity to talk to Winchester City Manager, City of Winchester, and their vice mayor. They also have some similar concerns with I-81 and some of the challenges, and so she and I are going to continue to talk as well. And I think there's starting to be a lot of interest building and trying to have some discussions with the General Assembly about I-81. It was good to talk to Secretary Lane last Monday, also tomorrow. I appreciate Ms. Majors mentioning the, on Thursday, Commonwealth Transportation Board has a meeting in Roanoke at 4 o'clock over at the Holiday Inn on Ordway to talk about transportation projects. I also have the opportunity tomorrow at 11 to meet with Court Rosen, who's our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, to talk about projects in Montgomery County and the New River Valley. And Dan Brew and I will be talking with Court, Mr. Rosen tomorrow about those as well. So between last Monday, tomorrow, and if folks show up Thursday, I think they'll get an earful from Montgomery County over the last two weeks. Mr. Chair, that's all I have this evening.
Supervisor Creek?
No.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, I think I said what I needed to, David.
Okay. Supervisor Biggs?
I just wondered if, you know, if I would take a look at the resolution from Roanoke County that Ms. Majors provided, especially Marty, to see if there's anything that we need to do as a board in regards to that. And then I just wanted to tell you guys that the New River Valley Community Services Board, the new executive director is James Pritchett, and I think I've mentioned that before, and he is doing a really good job. He's building on the foundation that Rosemary Sullivan left in place, but he's doing some things that he wants to do and showing some, I think, excellent leadership. And so I didn't know if you all would be interested. Do you want me to put those board minutes in the weekly administrator's report, or is it just more like if there's something that I feel like we should talk about, bring it up? I just, I know you're bombarded with papers, so I didn't know what would be best.
Put it in the county administrator's
Okay, then you guys can decide whether, what you want to do. Okay.
Go ahead and do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Demoss?
Just a reminder about the Mount Tabor Ruotang Club's biscuit breakfast that is this Saturday. I see some people laughing because I mistakenly thought that it was last Saturday. Thankfully, I found out late enough on Friday night where I didn't set an alarm and wake up to be there on Saturday morning. But that is from 7 to 10 at Mount Tabor, at Fletcher's Chapel on Mount Tabor Road. It's homemade biscuits, homemade sausage gravy, and homemade apple butter. So please come out and support the Ruotang Club, have breakfast, buy apple butter, makes great gifts.
Supervisor Shepherd?
On your way to that breakfast?
Or after that breakfast, just want to remind everybody that Saturday is also the pancake
breakfast at the Long Shot McCoy Fire Department, Risky Squad, from 6:30 to 11:00, so.
So you have enough time to have two breakfasts?
If you hit one early, then you can have brunch.
That's all I have.
Supervisor King?
I would like to thank Ms. Carroll for working Monday.
I've got a couple of things. One, I think a few of you saw a email I got from Gary
Reedy. He's with Citizens Net over in Floyd County. And they are very interested in when we're going through the joint process of potentially bringing internet services, starting off maybe in the Reiner area and spreading out from Floyd. And he's asked to have lunch with us. And obviously, the three of us can't go, and since it involves the PSA, and I know that April is very involved with internet access for everyone, and I know this could potentially affect Reiner, would anybody have any objections, me just directing April and Supervisor King to maybe meet with citizens, see what we can find out, and see about how we can maybe bring high-speed internet to more of our citizens? Is that something?
I don't object to it, but it's more, it's more an area that you have researched and specialized in quite a bit more than I do. So I wonder if I would be able to bring as much to the table in terms of understanding as what you would, Chris?
All right, and that's fine. And I'll be happy to go then with Supervisor King, and we'll head over to Floyd County one, either afternoon or evening or lunchtime. In regards to that, you've heard David Clark mention that there's going to be a dedication of the parking ride on Saturday at 10 o'clock. I think it's going to be a really good event. I'm looking forward to attending.
Which breakfast are you going to go to first?
It's which breakfast do I go to, and then go to that, and then I'm supposed to be at homecoming at Concord at 1 o'clock. So
You can do it all.
No, no pressure. But I've got to admit, I've been to the McCoy breakfast. I haven't been to the other one. And the McCoy, man, they bring out the bacon. I'm just saying that there's
Sausage gravy.
Sausage gravy.
We have sausage gravy, homemade.
And I know sausage gravy in my world is like filet mignon, okay? So there's, it's a tough choice. But do y'all use gnocchetti sausage?
I'm not sure. It's homemade by the president of the club's wife.
That sounds really good.
What kind of sausage?
Anyways, with that being said, I don't think there's anything else before the board. This meeting is adjourned.